I'll call it an order, the January 26th, 2015, regular meeting of the Forest Hills School District Board of Education. We are in a new venue here, thanks to our Anderson Township trustees, Josh Girth, Russ Jackson, and Andy Pappas. Appreciate the opportunity for using facilities. The treasurer, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Here.
Mr. Fruman?
Here.
Dr. Heiss?
Here.
Mr. Himmelgarn?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here. You all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The mandatory safety briefing, the exits are marked. The audience to your left and behind where the board is seated. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Tepper?
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. Item three, approval of the minutes of the business advisory committee meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepper?
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. We need changes or corrections to the minutes of the previous regular meeting, December 15th. Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepper?
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. Moving on to correspondence, I do actually have a piece of correspondence that I've received. It's from the, let's see, from Kevin Ashley, Senior Audit Manager, Audit Division, on behalf of the Auditor of State, David Yost. I participated in the annual audit of the school district that the Auditor of State performs on January 15th, and I received correspondence after that, that our treasurer, Mr. Tepper, will be receiving the Auditor of State award with distinction. I don't remember the percentage of people who actually qualify for that award in the state, but it's a very small percentage. After sitting through the, actually, I was on the phone, listening to the audit, it was really impressive to hear the accolades that the state auditor folks had for the Forest Hills School District, and in particular, for the treasurer's office and our treasurer. You know, there are a lot of things that can go wrong, and every once in a while you read about them in the paper, but it's really comforting to know that we have somebody who really does the job right and follows the right process. And again, so I believe somebody will be coming in representing the auditor to actually present the award, but since this happened this past month, and I did get the email that you are going to be receiving it, I simply wanted to say congratulations, and I know you frequently talk about the fact that it's a team effort, but congratulations. Moving on, Dr. Jackson?
Yes, I have a couple pieces of correspondence I'd like to share with the Board of Education. First of all, I most recently have been receiving correspondence from the College Board in regards to our guest teacher program and the application. I would like to share with the Board that, first of all, I'd like to thank Brad Chamberlain for his efforts as our secondary curriculum coordinator, for really being the lead of this whole program, where we have brought two guest teachers that are teaching in both of our high schools and our middle school, Mandarin as a language. And the guest teacher program correspondence is in regards to renewing that particular application. So Brad has completed the application, I've signed it, and we have mailed it back to the College Board, and a copy will be going to the Ohio Department of Education, and to continue the program for at least another year. So with that, congratulations to Brad and all the work he's done, as well as the program. The second piece of correspondence, and I truly mean this is somewhat recent correspondence, because as if you talk to Natasha Adams, our Director of Curriculum and others, they will tell you that things change almost on a daily basis when it comes to the state of Ohio and our new assessments and our testing. Some of the most recent information received is that coming this Thursday, we will be participating, as is all districts across the state, in a testing infrastructure test, where all of our students, or at least a portion of our students in grades three through nine, will be participating in the new state assessments, part in moving on in regards to whether the infrastructure is capable or of handling everyone. The reason I say that is because, again, this was just a new piece of information that just we recently received, so, I mean, it's a good thing, most definitely we want the testing to work as we move forward, but if you think about it, the interruption that just this one thing, one testing, will do for us during that day, which is this Thursday. So with that, those are the two pieces of correspondence that I'd like to share today. Thank you.
Dallas, they've been changing that date, I don't know, several times over the last month.
Yes.
When did they just tell you that it would be Thursday?
Natasha was what, a week?
We had in the last couple weeks that it just finalized on that the actual day was going to be, and exactly that we had some control over the time, because forever was mysterious, like there was a window of time, and it was narrowed down to a day, and then it was another day, and it was finally landed here, and then we could pick the hour that we would participate in.
So teachers that have had plans for their curriculum this week, and maybe planned tests, they're changing everything at the last minute?
They're having to make some changes. We're trying to be flexible with people, because we want to be polite without being ridiculous, so we are making exceptions if someone absolutely can't accommodate this practice. But we've been told that it's vitally important for, really, from the technical end of things and for the administrative end of getting a test, that it would be an added value for us to do it now and not on first day testing, so we're hoping to learn something with a little bit of sweat and tears over it.
Was that our snow day?
Thank you. Okay. Oh, my God.
Don't start that one.
Mr. Tepper, do you have any correspondence?
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Procedures for public commentary. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There's a time for public participation, which is two items down in our agenda. Individuals who'd like to share their opinions or comments, list the agenda item on topic on a note card, and the cards are available over here to your right. Remarks should be addressed to the Board as a group, and be within the five-minute time limit. If several people wish to speak on the same topic, the time limit may be adjusted. A dialogue is typically not part of this process. If anybody would like to address the Board, please pick up a green card. Moving on, item number five, let's see, commendations and recognition. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, Mr. Smith and the Board of Education. It is January, and every January it's our honor, and it's honor across the state of Ohio, to recognize our dedication and the contributions of our school board members. Sitting in front of you is a little token of our appreciation from our administrative staff, and Susan made some nice cards for you as well. The Forest Hills is, again, very fortunate to have five very dedicated professionals that give up a lot of their time to work for the kids and the teachers and administrators of our district. I tell people all the time, and I have the best board, I believe, in southwest Ohio, if not the state, so thank you so much for that. We all know that it's a very challenging time in education, and that between budgeting constraints and all the new mandates that we just spoke about, your job's not an easy one. So with that said, you put in countless hours, sometimes thankless hours, especially over the last several months, this Board of Education, and on behalf of the students, the staff, and the community of Forest Hills School District, I sincerely extend a sincere appreciation for everything you do. I'm very fortunate also that Ohio School Board Association has provided appreciation certificates for each of you, and so I know it's not a lot, but thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cool.
Oh, go ahead. It's really quite nice.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. You know, I remember my first time on the Board, I'd been on the Board all of a few days, and it was board member appreciation, but we do appreciate your recognition, and I think I can speak for the Board. We love doing this job, or we wouldn't be here, so thank you. Anybody else?
Thanks.
Moving on, next item on the agenda is always one of the most fun items. This is the culmination of all the activity that we're here for, and so at this point in time, I'd like to recognize Principal Bloodwater for the presentation of a diploma.
Thank you. It is my extreme pleasure to ask that the Board approve the granting of a high school diploma to the following student, who I know is a tremendously positive young lady, and is looking forward to completing some more coursework towards being a teacher, and I am asking that the following student, which has completed all requirements for a diploma from Anderson High School, come forward to receive her diploma, and that is Casey Sue Battle.
To make this official, do we have a motion to award the diploma?
I move that we approve the diploma for Casey Battle.
Second. Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
I tried to get it so Mike can tweet it out.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Himmelgarn?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Congratulations.
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 We always like to recognize the parents. Before you get out of the door, we want to say congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Did you get the picture you needed?
For that?
Okay.
While Casey's still here, I just was informed that she hasn't stopped her schooling. She's already a student at the United States, taking several courses already, and does plan on continuing her education and becoming a teacher.
Excellent. That's great.
Moving on, public commentary. I have received no cards, so we will move ahead in the agenda. District updates from the superintendent. I know you're going to give us your usual update, and one of the things that we asked for at the last meeting was, in particular, was an update on the process that will be used as we move forward on facilities, so we're looking forward to that also.
Okay, well, basically, let's just start with that, Mr. Smith. Since the passage, actually, long before the bond issue passage in November, a lot of work was being done in regards to our facilities programming. Since that time, we've worked in earnest to get our projects off the ground, and I'm very pleased to say that I believe that we're on schedule, maybe even a little ahead of schedule in that regard. Lots of things have happened, and most recently, we'd like to share, and I'd like Rick to help share what we just went through this week, or, excuse me, last week, it's already many, so Rick, the bond rating presentation. Rick?
Well, part of the sale of bonds is establishing just you wouldn't need that creditworthiness of an institution, so for institutional investors to invest in Forest Hills, our financial stability and strength are key. We, our team, I should say, of two board members, both Randy and Forrest, Ray and Dallas and I, as well as our partners, Brian Seedhouse at Huntington, Heather Arling at Fifth Third Securities, and Brad Rui from Dinsborn Shoal, the eight of us went to Chicago on Wednesday and presented to the two main rating agencies, which would be Moody's and Standard and Poor's. And why would we do that? Obviously, heavily financially driven process, but there's a lot of the metrics that are what makes Forest Hills unique, or what are those intangibles that they don't see in the numbers. So that's why we wanted to get in front of those rating agencies to be able to share our story. So, you know, briefly, we met, spent a couple hours with each one, and feel pretty strong about our message. Obviously, they got to hear the passion from both Forrest and Randy, why Forest Hills is the place to be, and why, what you don't see in the numbers. So that was pretty special. And then, obviously, Dallas and Ray and I then filled in on the academics, the economic development, and the financial picture, and then Randy closed the door, so.
Made the close. Close the door. By the way, it was a good close to him. You did both, actually, but.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I know the incredible amount of work that you all put into that program. I saw a number of drafts of your presentation. Rick, I know you were working on this weeks ahead of time, and I know you hadn't have put 50, 100 hours into this thing, and Forrest took a day off of surgeries.
Two days.
Two days to go. Randy took a, you know, just retired and flew back from Florida to be there for this thing, and on behalf of the Board and the community, we really thank you, all of you, Dallas, Rick, and Ray, I know you were involved in this too, the time and energy put into this, and for the community, a quarter percentage difference on the bond rating is, I don't know, hundreds of thousands of dollars that we're not paying in interest, and instead can go into the facilities, and they all recognize that, and they really put in the efforts.
I mean, obviously, over 32 and a half years, the goal is to, as Jim said, is to have that, an interest rate of a point or two could be, you know, between half a million and a million dollars in the debt payments that the community won't have to pay. So, you know, that's the reason you do it. We have a strong rating now, we have a strong message to improve that, so, you know, like I said, small change in our bond rating will mean that we all, as taxpayers, will pay less debt over the course of the bond. So we find out on Wednesday, so good news all the way around. It's a great marketing piece, so we hope to be able to, you know, share that. A lot of people participated, contributed lots of great information. I mean, the quality profile was huge in a lot of it as well, so that's everybody's fingerprints on that, so I think it's a pretty strong message to people that don't know us, I mean, they're rating companies throughout the United States, so we had to bring it to home as to what makes our little corner of Hamilton County important.
I got an email from Heather Arling, I think it is, from Fifth Third, and she was extremely complimentary, well, as you might expect, first about the district, but then also about the presentation that the administration put together, so she said she sees these all the time, and it was one of the best she saw. Now, you might say that all the time, but I think that, in this case, having been there, I think it was true, so congratulations.
Okay. And as Rick says, we should be receiving our rating, our updated, hopefully updated rating, this Wednesday, and then the next piece of information will be our bond issuance will be actually a week from now, will be on February the 4th. So things are moving ahead in regards to the financing, and what I'd like to do is reintroduce to you Joe Kunkel, who is the head of our design team with SSOE, and Joe wants to, the next part of the presentation is really just give us kind of an update of where we've been and where we're going, and you have a presentation in front of you, and we also have it up on the board there as well. So, Joe? Thank you.
Okay.
I don't think those are working good.
Oh, okay, don't worry about that, so I can just stand over here.
All right.
It's a pleasure to be here.
You do need to be by, I think, the stand, mic on the stand.
Okay.
Nope?
I'm good, okay. No, I've been before the school board, since before the bond issue passage, so it is great being back here now to congratulate you on passage, a wonderful achievement, and this is an exciting project moving forward. It is, I'd say, we kicked into high gear within two weeks afterwards. The first item up there was that first round of visioning meetings, which all took place in the month of December, so getting around to every school. As we presented, the visioning was really very much a very open session for them to talk. We presented some talking points, where basically said to expound upon the things that impede educational delivery in the room, in the classroom, and what would enhance educational delivery, both from a classroom standpoint and from an overall building standpoint. One of the next items we hit upon was the traffic concepts and safety meetings with the county and township zoning officials here in this facility. We actually did two rounds of that, going through each building, addressing the traffic issues where the changes will be. The second round is really narrowed in and focused onto solutions that are acceptable to the township and the county, so those pieces are getting further developed. Then we had the fire safety review with the Anderson Township Fire and Safety, and again, going through each building and getting direction from them, kind of walking through what the issues were and how we were going to approach those. Programming and concept development is somewhat ongoing. We're further refining the program and the direction, taking these ideas and things from the visioning session, become the goals and objectives, and developing those into solutions that we can then present as we move forward here. Beginning also the development of early site packages, we are talking about getting these site packages out earlier for, one is Nagel, the transportation aspect of that, and the drop-offs and separation of buses and traffic, or drop-off traffic. Wilson is looking at that in terms of an early package for the site prep. Then actually, some summer projects, the HVAC at Air will be going out, and then also Nagel's a pre-purchase on the chiller packages coming up tonight. Those are the ones that have been completed, Dave. The next slide is the ones in the process and where we're headed. There has been ongoing meetings with much of the administrators, the principals of the different offices and central office. We are setting up official meetings, actually begin tomorrow, with each administrator on the facilities, to talk through, again, the goals and objectives that were defined during the visioning sessions, and again, how that will focus in terms of conceptual solutions that sets us up for the second round of the actual visioning meetings. We told everybody the first we would be coming back to have this discussion. Those will start next week, where we actually bring up and present to them in terms of the solutions or possible solutions and concepts, and get a sounding board to get their input on that before moving forward to the next step, which is really getting into floor plan development. As we get into floor plan development, as we talked earlier on, every building is, for the most part, some modification on the outside, so there is some visual change in the exterior of the buildings, which scenario we want to get the community input, so we'll arrange community meetings for that community input that really deals with how the new entries look, how the additions look, and what is the new aesthetic of the building, particularly talking about Wilson being an entirely new building, what is the direction proceeding there in terms of addressing Wilson. Then there's the programming follow-up, which is a process we're starting. This is when we get to the development of plans, that every room, we sit down again with the users, and define the classroom, a place we refer to as programming sheets, that every space, we basically go back to a resource committee to define the, how that space is used in the design solution for that space. This whole effort is to wrap up the schematic design package. Schematic design is that first phase, but it's also the most intense phase, where we're really defining the scope, the design, and compliance with the budget for each facility before we move on into what will be design development, construction document, and we'll address that later in the task or responsibility matrix. Each of the schematic designs, then we'll come back to the school board for approval before proceeding on. That's one of the milestones as we move forward. Let's talk about the series of meetings coming up. This is just a chart outlining these three key meetings over the, basically, the administration meetings and the visioning over the next few weeks, and then getting into the actual community meetings over the next few months as we move forward. The next piece of this, and Mr. Jackson's going to help present on this, but this task or responsibility breakdown is basically how the project is organized, and these tasks, you know, as we talked about, will also break down, this is just kind of a general category, they're broken down further into further breakdown of the task.
Any questions for Joe before we move on to this next part? Or we can do them at the end as well. I would also like to share with the Board that Susan and I have been scheduling those visioning meetings, and we have most of them scheduled, and I'll get that out to you tomorrow. Love to have your participation in those, or just like before, to see this process and how it works, okay?
I do have one question. On anything that the Board's going to be asked to approve, how soon prior to a board meeting will we have, for instance, schematic designs or whatever it is we're supposed to approve?
Probably, we could set it up to be, would two weeks work?
Two weeks would be wonderful, at least for me. What I didn't want is Friday to approve on Monday.
Right. Or worse, Monday.
Yeah, right.
We're going to backtrack a little bit here. If we get a rush package, and we have to, you know, say, hey, can we occasionally need a week or something to that effect, we'll try to make the standard two weeks, but sometimes some things, you know, you get something that you just need to push too quick, that's okay also. That'll be the exception rather than the rule.
All right, great.
I think I was going to ask about is the meetings for public input, are, I saw Erica here earlier, I assume, are these being broadly promoted? Because I know that was one of the things when we went through the, the bond issue process, that was one of the things that was critical, and I know a lot of people had thoughts and wanted to provide input, and I want to make sure we actually follow through so that they have the ability to do that. Thank you.
Beginning as early as tomorrow, in fact, we already have a couple of these scheduled. Those community meetings, you can see on the chart or on your paper, beginning in April, or actually into February throughout April and May. Our goal is to make sure that we get those dates out as quickly as possible and invite our community to participate. Some of those meetings will, as Joe was saying, when we're talking about Wilson, the new building itself, there will be a lot of input in regards to, you know, what the design that the community would like in that area. Many of our other buildings as well, as he said, there's going to be some facial changes of those buildings, whether through its security, vestibule, that whole new entrance. We want our community's input on that as well, as well as some of those additions that we're putting out there as well. So we'll get those to you just as quickly as we get those scheduled, and Eric and I already worked on how to communicate that. Ray, would you like to talk a little bit about our task and responsibilities sheet there?
Sure. I think that one of the things that several of the board members have brought up in past meetings is who's responsible for what. So what we've tried to do is to lay this out, and what we have here is trying to do so with regards to whether it's something the school board's involvement, district administration, the owner's representative, or the design team, or even the general contractor. To back up for a moment, we did an RFP for an owner's rep. Two weeks ago, this Wednesday, we interviewed three finalists. Over the course, the couple days after that, we went from three to two, and over the course of this past weekend, we arrived at one, that we're going to start negotiating this. So it is our hope, if not at the February regularly scheduled board meeting, at the special board meeting, we'll bring an agreement. But this is also going to be a little bit, you know, the backbone of that agreement, because it delineates duties. So as you can see here, as you go through the process, whether it's in a program design, a schematic design, we can flip to the next page, getting into development, construction, the bidding process, each of those delineates who has the approval authority, who's involved in the review and recommendation, lead responsibility provides input. As you can see, you very rarely see something where there's just one letter and a line. I mean, this is truly a team effort here, so there's going to be a lot of involvement here as we go through the process. You'll also see here, later in our agenda, the scene, there's things we're doing in relationship to this. As Joe said, we've got two projects we're bringing out for bid, we plan to advertise for bid on Wednesday. It'll be doing the air conditioning at Air Elementary, along with pre-ordering equipment for HVAC work at Nagel. We're going to buy the equipment separate, and then come back and probably bid out the installation of that in February, because we have such a long lead time on that. But even the installation, the air conditioning over there, we're doing roof work over there, so it seemed a great opportunity while we're doing that roof work in the same area to be installing the air conditioning. And by installing the air conditioning, there's also incentives from Duke that we're now eligible for, because the area we're roofing has air conditioning. So we've been working together on that. We hope to bring those bid results to the board, regular scheduled board meeting in February. If you go down to the next one, this is really kind of the big one, this is where you're really getting into a lot of the constructions, so you can kind of see how the duties are delineated here. One of the things that we have here near and dear to my heart is this line change orders, and that's where you have one of the resolutions that we have here. orders, and that's where you have one of the resolutions that we have here later this evening, is the fact that there's a resolution that we're bringing typically in the past. I've authorized change orders in the field during the course of a project. We do our homework, we authorize those, so the project can move forward, and we come back to the board for formal approval. What's been recommended by a number of legal firms, and also brought up at the construction seminar I went to, is we should have something formalized, because those contractors who may bid on something that aren't necessarily familiar with me or with us, are going to want to see something where the board's going to be the authority to do that. I will still come back to the board for formal approval. Anything over $25,000, we will, you know, will be brought to the board, you know, to approve, so.
Ray, could I stop you right there?
Yeah.
Well, what I'm understanding is there'll be, sometimes there'll be timing constraints where you will have to do an initial approval, and then you'll come back to us later for formal final approval.
Correct.
Okay.
But this will all be done after involvement and input from the design team, from the owner's rep, from our people on the ground, and, you know, we will be doing our homework as we've done in the past. So it'll be something that at every pre-construction meeting, they're going to be told that their first sign of seeing something, we're going to be on-site. And we'll be relaying that information to the board as we do that, so it's not going to be a matter of, you know, a couple of days before the board meeting, you say, hey, this is something we did several weeks ago. We'll be making sure everybody's aware. And Dallas is going to have a steering committee that we'll be reviewing these with as we go as well. From time to time, there's going to be things that not to slow down progress, we want to move forward on it. So this kind of gives you an idea on things. Another thing we have here is for pay requests. As these things start coming in, you see in the HR agenda, we're bringing on some help to deal in that, some very specialized help that's going to be dealing in that. We want to make sure that Mr. Tepfer's streak of perfect audit stays intact. So we're going to make sure not only when we get the documents that they're prepared properly, that every T's crossed and every I's dotted, and everything balances out, and, you know, to do that is a very laborious process. We've found somebody pretty special that's done this in the past, we feel very confident with. So, I mean, this kind of gives you an idea. If you go into the next one, this is part of, as things close out here, again, you know, nothing's done in a silo here. It's all part of the team effort, so it's going to involve everybody on the team as we go through, you know, closing out the projects. So hopefully, a little over three years from now, we'll be saying, okay, folks, we're on this last page.
District administration, that's pretty broad. Is that more specific for certain, especially when it comes to approval?
Well, I think, I mean, I think generally speaking, that that's going to be Dallas, Rick, and I, but there's going to be things that take place in the building. If we're doing something out at Wilson, we're going to involve Bob and his team, and those types of things. Maybe Natasha and Betsy, Christine, depending upon the scope of things. So I think, you know, in general, there's going to be high-level administration that's going to have to get involved in some of this stuff.
Don't disagree, but when I see approval authority, typically, you know, who's the approver? And is that clear as you go through the process? Is it one person? Is it multiple people who can approve? Just so there's clear?
Oh, no, no. If it's approval at a district level, that's probably, it's going to be one of the three of us.
Okay.
Obviously, the board's level, it's going to be something at the board meeting. I'm going to suspect that, I'll just forewarn you, there's probably going to be a period of time where we're going to have, you know, probably be meeting a little bit more frequently to address some of these things.
Very good, thank you. Question? Okay, and we can, if the board has any questions, feel free to give us an email or a call. We can chat with you and walk through these a little bit more detail. Finally, I'd like to ask Joe to talk a little bit more about timelines. I know it's a little fuzzy up there, but you have a copy on your desk as well in regards to our timelines from where we are today, and then kind of walk us quickly through these processes.
Yeah, this is a very general timeline, no exact dates here, but basically, three-and-a-half-year project. The first one's, we listen to Aaron Sherwood together, being the ones that probably easiest to expedite out the door. Probably the first one's bidding out, and we get through into May, and actually, we're well on schedule with that. We're seeing where that can come out even earlier potentially. But the intent is getting bid packages out after that, followed by several other bid packages, that for a year from today, everything has been bid. And also, a year from today, you'll see that going down that line, roughly where it says, where it's fuzzy up there, you can see where it says end of 2015, or 2016 up there, in January, that basically, not only is everything bid, but also, a majority of these projects are in construction. Some of the bidding, we get into, or longer, you see Mercer, the next one down. The construction timeframe doesn't necessarily mean that we need a year and a half or almost, you know, 18 months for construction, but we're dealing with phasing. So we are dealing with intense summers, what can we do during the school year, and then phasing in operations that can be, you know, put over time. Likewise, you'll also see the bigger package with Turpin, you'll see a Turpin early package. The same thing occurs for Anderson, an early package. And that, not 100% defined today, but very likely is site prep, and possibly even a building addition in order to create the swing spaces upfront early on. But again, those pieces are still being determined, but that's, there will be some early packages associated with that, particularly in the bigger projects. Wilson, as it gets underway, is probably the easiest in terms of a clean schedule. We get through the design, basically, we're looking at designing before the end of the year, and construction, which is probably roughly 16 months to have it ready for, basically, it'll be 2017, a fall, is what we're looking at there, so. And Wilson also has an early package, looking in terms of plateauing the site to get things ready. Subematics down toward the bottom being pretty much within the same schedule. You'll see at the end, we give ourselves a little bit of a buffer toward the end if we need the additional construction extension. Again, if we have to get into the end of the year of 2017, take advantage of getting in over basically the holiday break at the end of the year, gives the opportunity to fix that, to make that happen also. Nagel's a shorter schedule, they're basically three smaller, the site project is kind of standalone, and then what we do in terms of the interior and technology, also somewhat of a standalone project. Again, this is a general timeline. We'll be adjusting a little bit as we create the more detail. We'll be giving more specific dates as we get into the next month. Actually, with each schematic design package, we'll come a detailed schedule for each project as this schematic design package gets submitted. But overall, I think, again, what's this present as a problem, the overall organization and process of the overall project.
One of the most common questions I've had, at least in the last couple of months, is timing, you know, what's going to happen when? And so it's helpful.
Joe, the one thing that, and I don't even, you're probably not even prepared to talk about this now, because this is great information, by the way, thank you so much, but is the displacement of kids, because so much of this is going on during the school year. I can't imagine there's a building, with the exception of Wilson, where kids aren't going to be displaced during the school year. And, you know, how's that, I don't want to know in detail how it's going to work, but how, will you come back and talk to us about that at some point?
We'll make that actually part of the schematic design submission. As I said, the schematic design submission is the big package that puts everything together. And we've already started talking about how some of that is done, the different schools and how we do the phasing, even the smaller schools, where we can build the addition first and make that happen, because it becomes part of the contractual obligation also of the contractor, because even though we don't, you know, define the whole schedule for it, we will define those aspects of things we want built first. That's also the intent with Turpin and Anderson, that the early package actually deals with that swing space.
Right. And is there any, and this may be too early too to ask this question, is there any cost associated with, there has to be cost associated with moving the kids or whatever we're doing with them. And it's too early to talk about that too, probably. You'll talk about it in the schematic design phase?
Yes, I mean, we'll go through that. In some cases, if we do some special construction to accommodate it, because there will be some special construction. They're not big price items, but there's walls built, things built to define where, you know, exiting during construction. So there is some construction that takes place associated with just temporary conditions to take care of the phasing and putting kids in temporary facilities at the time.
Okay, thanks. I'll stay tuned. Thanks.
And you said the contractor. Will we find out more about that by project or contractors within a project? Okay.
Yes. Yeah, the contract delivery, yeah, we'll be looking at different, usually single general prime or multiple prime contracts.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy, and thank you, Joe, and Ray, and Rick for helping us out here this evening. And again, our goal is to provide an update to the board on a monthly basis as we get into more of the specifics, and we'll have more specific type things to speak about. But I thought it was very important that the board have a general understanding of where we are today, and the responsibility matrix and a timeline for today. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Actually, I wanted to combine the board discussion with the superintendent update, because that's really what I wanted to have our discussion about, because to me, it's very important that we have a very clear understanding of what the process will be for a project of this magnitude and this many projects, nine and 10 if you count transportation. Like I said, I just want to make sure it's crystal clear that we understand the process and who has responsibility and accountability and approval. That's why I asked the question earlier. Does anybody else have anything else they want to ask or throw out for future discussion or things that you'd like the superintendent or the treasurer to follow up on?
Forrest and I, along with Dallas, Rick, Ray, and a host of others, participated in the interviews of the three candidates for owner's rep after, I think there were six or seven proposals that Rick, Ray, and Dallas whittled down to three, and they were really all really exceptional. I don't think we could have gone wrong with any one of the three that we had the pleasure of interviewing. A little bit different, and, you know, I know where, I think we're headed, but I had asked Dallas, and I apologize, I asked him early, late in the game, if we could get the candidate that we're, I think we're looking at hiring to come and present further to the board so that the rest of the board would have the opportunity to get the kind of good feeling that the rest of us had in listening to those presentations. So I asked late, and I guess he wasn't available tonight, so they're going to try to do that, maybe if not at the next regular meeting, maybe even at the work session on the 14th.
Prior to contracting with this potential individual?
Well, it would have to be prior, because we can't, we've got to approve it, so. It may be on the same night, I don't know what the timing will work like, but I would think so.
Okay.
Absolutely, and Jim, we are working on that to make sure that that happens, and so probably most likely be at the work session if we can get that to happen. Thank you.
One of the three people, it was, reminded me of Finding a House. You read all the presentations, and they all look good, and then there was definitely different flavors of each of the owner's rep, and one did rise to the top, so.
Yeah, I thought two did, and one more so than the other, yes.
Thank you. As we go through the next year, which promises to be a very exciting year for the school district, I do want to make sure that we follow up during the levy, the bond issue campaign, we got, I'll call it constructive criticism, and I want to make sure as we go through the democratic process, that we actually do follow up on a lot of the questions that were asked, that were fair questions, and that we do this very transparently and make sure that we get the public input that we promised that we would solicit. Any other questions or commentary for facilities? Moving on to student services, and by the way, without objection, we will take the items 10-1 through 14-2 as consent agendas. There's objection, hearing none, we will take them as a consent agenda. Items 10.1 through, looks like 10.5, Betsy Ryan.
Student Services has 10.1 to 10.5. Four of those are overnight trips by Turpin and Anderson. Turpin is requesting approval for their academic quiz team to travel to Copley, Ohio, for their academic quiz team invitational, their orchestra at Gatlinburg, Tennessee, for their music showcase festival, their Latin club to Columbus, Ohio, for their Ohio Junior Classical League convention. For item 10.2, Anderson High School is requesting approval for their drama club to travel to Chicago, Illinois, to participate in workshops and attending and evaluate professional performances. All the information in these items have been reviewed, and all the information is included in each of these agenda items. They have been reviewed, and all students have been provided provisions for financial hardship. Item 10.4 is a revision to our Hamline County Educational Service Agreement for auxiliary services for Immaculate Heart of Mary School. This service change is actually another half-day of service from .6 to .7 FTEs for speech and language to IHM.
Any questions? Moving on, item 11.1, this is Natasha Adams.
Tonight, we'd like to ask that you approve the supplemental book for language arts grades 11 and 12 as presented. It's the book Bird by Bird, and it has been on review at the central office since November 24th.
Questions? Hearing none. Moving on, human resources. The human resources report, Mrs. Carnahan. And by the way, thank you for being here this evening. I recognize you had a family issue here, so thank you for making it.
You're welcome. Item 12.1, leave of abs, item A, leave of absence. Item B, we do have the change of assignment. Item C would be the salary schedule for exempt, and the reason for the change here would be the addition of the administrative assistant that Ray was discussing earlier for the business operations office to make sure we get all of that information taken care of for the construction project. Item D, which encompasses E, F, G, H, and I. Item E would be the appointments. We see certified staff, Ashley Hammett, just to complete this school year as an English-language learner teacher. Classified staff, going to the next page. We continue with classified staff as a paraprofessional at Mercer, Dan Horn Schmier as a bus driver. We have bus monitors. Additional classified staff at the bottom of page two, which are lifeguards for Anderson. Moving on, the next page, we see another lifeguard, and then we have Pat Tussi. And again, this is the person that we were discussing earlier. We're very excited to have Pat back to be the administrative assistant to work with business operations office. Item F, paraprofessional contract. Item G, we see a number of special services appointments, those go on page three, and the very top of page four, if you look at page H, I'm sorry, if you look at item H on page four, we see our coaches and consultants, advisors, that goes on, and at the top of page five, item I, substitute personnel. Again, we'll give that same commercial as we did last time. We are in great need of substitutes. If you'd like to work for Forrest Hills, call the human resources department. And since last board meeting, we've had an increase in staff from, of 1.11 to 779.76 FTE. The superintendent recommends the board approve the HR report.
Have any questions on the HR report? Hearing none. Moving on to items 13.1 through 13.5, business operations, Mr. Johnson.
The first item is a contract with Michael Schuster Associates for architectural services. They will be doing work in relation to our summer projects, as we've recently made a change there. The agreement is based on, we have a two-year fix as far as our fees associated with this. The second item is a, an agreement with Mercy Occupational Health and Urgent Care. This is for random drug testing. We're actually moving all of our occupational health services over to them. Mercy's been a good partner with us, and it just seemed a great time to do this. The only thing that will have a contractual obligation with them is under the random drug testing, because they take full ownership of it. They determine who and when and so forth, so we wanted to get in. So we lined that up with the Department of Transportation as far as their requirements. 13.3 is a change order on the Turpin turf replacement, but the project's done. We did our final walkthrough last week. We've got one minor punch list item we're going to address. But the change order is related to the fact primarily that when we entered into our agreement to turf, we got, we bought five years' worth of maintenance. We do annual maintenance on the turf each year that's a little bit above and beyond, and we got a price locked in for Anderson as far as the change order, the same. the change order, the same pricing. So that's the biggest significance of that. 13.4 is the resolution I mentioned a little bit earlier. This allows me to approve change orders up to $25,000. All will still be brought to the board for formal approval, but that's also not to say that there may be some, we bring the board for formal approval less than that. All will be discussed with Dr. Jackson's Facility Advisory Task Force. And the last is pretty exciting. So this will be the first of many. Rather than have a blanket approval to advertise for any and all projects related to bid, we'd make a conscious decision. We're going to bring these individually, so we identify them, we let the community know when things are going to happen here. So the first two things we're going to advertise are, one is the renovations to the HVAC at Nagel Middle School. Again, we're going to be pre-buying the equipment there. And the second is the renovations to the elementary, which is going to be air conditioning the gym end of the building.
And before you move on, I do want to, Ray, thank you so much for working with Duke Energy. Both these projects should conceivably bring in some Duke Energy rebates.
Correct. Right. And we've already been, we've actually, one of the things that, along with the meetings Joe's mentioned that we had in advance, is we sat down with Duke Energy about six weeks ago and laid things out and just made sure we were all on the same page as far as, under what program certain projects fell. So we've got, I think we've got all of our ducks in a row there. So the treasurer recommends the board approve each of these items as submitted.
Any other questions? Thank you. Moving on to the treasurer's report, items 14.1 and 14.2, Mr. Tepper.
Yeah, item 14.1 is a pretty action-packed resolution, 16 pages, does a lot of things. The highlights really, it provides issuance of up to $103 million in tax-exempt bonds. It awards the sale of the bonds to the underwriting partners that we have, Fifth Third Securities, PNC Bank, and RBC Capital Markets, and authorizes the district to enter to a bond purchase agreement with the underwriters once the bonds are sold, which generates our money. It provides protocol for the redemption, as well as a partial redemption of the bonds, and also authorizes the distribution of the preliminary which I share with the board today, and a final official statement for purposes of marketing the bonds, and also authorizes the district to engage in a continuing disclosure undertaking to provide ongoing information to those in the municipal marketplace. So it's recommended the board adopt the resolution as presented in 14.1.
Let me just stop, let me just ask a third question, because that is, as you said, you called it an action-packed document, yeah. It's a 16-page legal document. Does anybody have questions or comments about that document? You did mention that our legal counsel drafted that, therefore, legal counsel has reviewed it.
At Denzmore and Shaw, it's specialized bond counsel, and this is what they do. So yes, they've been our partner throughout. They also participated in the trip with us.
Attorneys?
Yes.
Oh, excuse me, I was addressing these two.
Yeah, we're just having a private conversation.
Being an attorney means absolutely nothing with this sort of stuff. It's an expertise, a specialty, that I don't have, and I don't pretend to be qualified to review and approve this. We've got bond counsel, and if they say it's right, I-
It's a niche. It's a niche practice.
I'm in the same position as the rest of you. You have to rely on their expertise.
I wasn't looking for your approval. I just wanted to see if you had any extra questions, because usually you guys usually dig a little deeper on some of this stuff.
I looked at it, and, you know, based on what bond counsel's saying, it seems reasonable. I wouldn't know what else to add to it. The thing we were talking about, and Rick, maybe you can help us with this. Julie's husband, Mark, of course, works for Denzmore and Shaw. Is this something that Julie needs to abstain on, or can she turn on this?
It was just reviewed by them. Correct. I'm good with that.
Anybody else? Thank you. Next item?
Item 14.2 is the treasurer's report. In A, we have our donations, and this month, our big donor was the Turpin PTA, over $8,400 worth of student work benches. So we appreciate all their support and all the support of all of our partners. In B, we have our statement of board accounts. All accounts are in good shape there. And C and D and E really show the receipts and expenditures to date. We're at the halfway point. So obviously, from a revenue standpoint, we're on the money there, where we should be. From an expense standpoint, a little bit ahead of a three- and five-year average, but not a great concern there. Item F, we have our bank reconciliation. G, we have our list of investments, which we give you the entire portfolio. H, we have the amendments to the appropriation. You do see a couple large changes there as we start to build the permanent improvement in the building fund related to the bond issue. Those will change, and we're trying to position those as this February timeframe hits, when money's available, to make sure that we can be in a position to pay for the services that we're getting. In item I, we're requesting the board make an adjustment to our board service fund to increase that amount to $14,000 for the training and professional development expenses. So it's recommended the board approve this report, as well as items 10.1 through 14.2 as presented by our whole team.
I move that we approve.
Hang on a second. Excuse me, Julie. Does anybody have any questions about the treasurer's report?
Yeah, Rick, you said that the expenses are just a little higher than the three and five-year averages. You indicate it's .8% above the three. I mean, that's hardly measurable. Was it different as the five-year average?
It's about the same. I track both, but I report three to the board, but I don't get both, so.
And that's basically right on. Yeah, okay.
Don't have a problem.
Any other questions on the treasurer's report? Proceed.
Okay. I move that we approve 10.1 through 14.2.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Mr. Tepper, please call a roll.
Mrs. Disinger?
Yes.
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Hamelgarn?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. Moving on, reports to the Board of Education. Item 15.1, Business Advisory Committee Report. Mr. Tepper?
Yeah, very briefly there. We met on the 19th last Monday, and it was, the timing was good, because we really went through the bond rating presentation, got some feedback, and it was a very productive meeting from that standpoint. Added some new members, so we got some additional segments of our community to chime in and help us form decisions and just get a better feel for what's really out in our community. So, but like I said, a lot of good feedback regarding the development of that, but that's really what the meeting was about.
Thank you. Any questions? Moving on, item 15.2, Forrest Hills Foundation Report. Mr. Fruman.
The Forrest Hills Foundation for Education met on January 14, 2015. The treasurer reported on last year's calendar activity, and the foundation really had a fantastic year. Revenues were up substantially, a couple of great fundraisers. The Forrest Hills 5K has always done quite well. This year, the soiree for success was also hugely successful. Our auctioneer is sitting in the back of the room, Randy Corbett. He had me paying much more than I had in mind for the item I bid on. But it was really great. Other contributions are off, and it looks like the foundation will be able to maybe even do more for the school district this year than it has in the past. And so things are really looking great with the foundation. There's also some consideration. In fact, it looks like more than consideration. They're looking at changing their fiscal year from a December 31st year-end to a June 30th year-end, so that it runs in conjunction with the school and allows us to, allows the foundation to support the district commensurate with the district's calendar, rather than the 12-month calendar ending December 31st. Program Initiative, team reported, the ACT/SAT prep session was just a couple of weeks ago. They changed the format. It's now including strategy reviews, as well as sections for math, English, and science. That's a little bit new. They're looking for some feedback. So those that participated, if you want to contact Dee Stone with any responses to whether you enjoyed that different format, please let her know. There's another prep session in March. Destination Imagination is also going great. They had a goal, I think it was about 20 teams, and they're up to 23 teams. So that's really great. It's going to be the regional competition is at Nagel on March 14th. It is a huge event. Would ever help anybody cares to provide, let Dee Stone know. She would be certainly happy to have that assistance. Forrest Hills 5K is, running clubs are being set up, and that is on May, what, 16th, Dee?
9th.
May 9th. Sorry, May 9th. So please sign up for that. And the Anderson Sports Hall of Fame Dinner is on March 21st. And they're also in planning for the golf event. So a lot going on with the foundation. Any questions?
Thank you. Did see Dee Stone in the audience. Want to thank you for all your hard work that you put in on the foundation. Moving on, Legislative Liaison Report, item 15.3. I think one of the most significant things that happened the last couple of weeks was the House Bill 487 of the 130th General Assembly required the Superintendent of Public Instruction to issue a report reviewing the number of tests administered in grades kindergarten through 12 and make recommendations for reducing the number of tests. The report was released by ODE last Thursday, and here's just a few of the recommendations. To limit the amount of time students take state and district tests to 2% of the school year, and limit the amount of time spent practicing for tests to 1% of the school year. Eliminate the use of student learning objectives. Eliminate the fall third grade reading tests. And you know what? Rather than go through the rest of these, I was chatting with Natasha Adams earlier before the meeting, and I know that you are deeply involved in this. Could you share some more perspective on the ODE report and how that could potentially impact the Forrest Hills School District?
This is the first time in a while we've seen some recommendations for changes that we are happy to see. And it really has a lot to do with the reduction of testing. A new kindergarten test was thrown into the mix this year. We had to prepare that over the summer and quickly kind of change that whole introduction to kindergarten. So it's like, welcome to kindergarten, here's your iPad, put your headphones on, and start testing you. It's kind of, that's how students were greeted this year. And we'd like to see that that would be updated and changed. The students having, or the teachers having to create their own student growth measures is relieved through these recommendations, which would be huge for our district. That's an area we haven't gotten into too deeply, because we just see it just adding tests and tests. But it is a requirement if this law doesn't change. And it just seems to be a lot of common sense, more balanced approach to assessment, using one assessment that can do multiple things for us versus two and three tests to identify, forgive, to measure growth, et cetera. So we're pleased with those, with the possibilities here.
Thank you. I can't remember the last time I remember somebody saying something about common sense coming out of Columbus, but anyway.
A little closer than ever.
Yeah.
Still needs to be passed through legislation, though. Those are just recommendations.
These are just recommendations. We're just hopeful.
That's a start.
It doesn't match more of what we would like to see.
The other thing I think was significant is the House Speaker Rosenberg announced that House Education Committee Chair will be Bill Hayes from Harrison Township, and the Senate Education Committee Chair will be Peggy Lehner. She was the previous Education Committee Chair in the Senate, and she seems to have a good grip on, I hear her saying a lot of what I would call common sense things also. So I think that's probably a good thing. Anyway, that's my report for Legislative Liaison. Does anybody have any questions? Moving on, Saga. I don't believe, oh, go ahead.
They didn't have a meeting, which is what you were going to say, but I did get a report from Leah Beck, the executive director. The High School National Drug Fact Week is coming up. She didn't put the date, but it's coming.
This week. Thank you.
It started tweeting out this morning, yes.
There you go. And social media is abuzz with High School National Drug Fact Week. The principals and administrators are tweeting about it, and those are being reposted and all that other social media stuff that I really don't understand. There's also an online quiz that students are being asked to participate. John Effort is helping to disseminate that, I understand. And-
That's tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning. Thank you, Peggy. And students who take the quiz will be entered into a drawing for gift cards. They'll have about three days to take it. It only takes 10 minutes, but they'll be given an opportunity to finish it. Also, every year at after prom, the fifth and sixth grade students write letters to juniors and seniors going to prom, encouraging to make good choices during prom season. That'll be going on again. And this year, in addition to Anderson and Turpin High Schools participating, McNicholas and Miami Valley Christian Academy are also participating in writing. So that's good. Also, if you recall last time, Susan, do we have this? Excellent. Last time, I reported about the youth summit that the Saga had conducted, and there was one video, well, there were a lot of videos, and there was one they sent us that they wanted to share with the board just kind of as an example of the neat things that the kids were doing in the youth summit. So we couldn't get the thing worked out last time, but we did this time. So, Susan? So that's actually just one example of, I'm not sure, I think there were about 10 to 15 videos that different groups of kids put together, all in the course of this one day youth summit. So good stuff they're learning, and Saga seems to be doing good things. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions? With that, the next meeting of the Board of Education will be at noon on Saturday, February 14th. No, it is not a Valentine's Day party. It is the purpose of that meeting will be to talk about board priorities. I think it's important to remember that the board, we're not administrators, we're policymakers. And that's a time for us to talk about what our priorities are, as we want to steer and direct policy for our school district. The board is the community's ability to have oversight over our asset, which is the school district. And so that's the purpose of that meeting. So I want to make sure we continue to focus on the priorities for the board, as opposed to thinking about it as projects for the administration. So that's February 14th. Again, that's an informal meeting. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education will be February 23rd, 2015. I assume we are right back here in this room. And with that, are there any other questions about the meeting? Then is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepper?
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mrs. Disinger?
Yes.
Dr. Heiss?
Yes.
Mr. Hamelgarn?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. Thank you all very much.